Good afternoon, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting as we do the people's work here in City Council. At this time, I'd like to first recognize our Boy Scout Troop 256, who's going to come up and after the prayer, which will be done by Reverend Larry Ugardi from First Lutheran Church of Portsmouth. Our Boy Scout Troop 256 will lead us in the pledge, and their scoutmaster is Mr. Russell Ely. So at this time, if we can get the Boy Scout Troop to come up in line and pastor, once they get in formation, and I'm sure you're an old Boy Scout, you'll know when that is, it's yours. All right, can we please stand? Boy Scouts.
Mayor Wright, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. Before that we get to the praying, I must speak a word of truth to power. I was stopped by no fewer than four people on my way in and asked to pray for the members of the council. I don't know what you folks have going on tonight, but it's going to be lively. If it's a personal problem, Ms. Sherrod has my card, give me a call. Let us come to the Lord in prayer today, remembering that 204 years ago, a fellow was born who became our 16th president, and this is the birthday of Abraham Lincoln. The invocation tonight honors President's Day, which is going to be observed officially in our country next Monday. Gracious Lord, majestic is your name in all the earth. Let our voice be heard in the council tonight, for we speak as a city of hope in a country united by common aspirations and willing sacrifice, dedicated in service to liberty, equality, and justice for all, and to you we humbly pray. Please bless our country's presidents, the memories of those past, and the calling of those yet to come, for their leadership and their every endeavor to make this nation the founder's intended blessing for us, for our posterity, and for the world. May your grace be with the families of our presidents who have passed away, and your spirit with President Obama and his family, as he continues to shoulder the burden of his office with dignity and vision. Grant in your mercy that our present and future leaders will always seek your guidance so that they may follow your lead with kindness, compassion, and love. Please deliver them from evil and bestow upon them the courage they need and the strength of will to lead our nation without hatred, spite, or greed. Finally, we ask your benediction upon all who have served our city, our commonwealth, and our country so honorably and well. Bless them for the good they have done and for the positive changes they have made. Truly, they have been instruments of your peace and have made our country second to none. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Reverend Ugardi, and thanks to the Boy Scout Troop 256. Let's give them a hand if we could.[286.12][286.12](APPLAUSE). Now, young men, we recognize that tomorrow is a school day, so if you have to leave early, you have our permission now. Do it in an orderly and quiet fashion, if you will. Thank you again for coming. Members of City Council, please indicate your attendance electronically, please.
Seven members of City Council are present.
Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of July 22, 2013, and a regular meeting of July 22, 2013. I'm sorry, I say July, January, the other July. January 22, 2013, and a regular meeting of January 22, 2013. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically on the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Meeks.
The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will notice a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you please conclude your remarks at that time. Public hearing, 13-61, public hearing on a use permit application. A, UP 1301, Churchland. G. Eric Doring for CVS Pharmacy requests a use permit to operate a pharmacy or drugstore with drive-through facility at 5829, 5821, 5815 High Street, 3125 Tyreneck Road, and 5830 Trucker Street. The future land use map in the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be developed as general mixed use. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and the applicant is available if there's questions.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, members of City Council, good evening. My name is Fred Brusso, I'm the interim planning director for the City of Portsmouth. The application before you is a request for a use permit to construct a drugstore or pharmacy in the Churchland section of the city with a drive-through component. As you can see on the graphics on the right, which is a copy of the digital zoning map, this shows the site to be zoned GMU or general mixed use. The applicant proposes to demolish several buildings to assemble the parcel and then construct a CVS pharmacy on the western half of the site. The picture on the left is a ground-level picture of the existing gasoline supply station and convenience store where the CVS would sit. This slide shows an aerial of the area. The subject parcels that are to be acquired and demolished are included in the red box. For reference, the Kroger parking lot in the bottom-right area is identified, as the new Harris Teeter store closer to the top of the slide is identified. This slide shows a site plan of the development. If you will look, you'll see this site plan is very similar to the CVS store that opened last year at the southeast corner of Airline Boulevard and Greenwood Drive. As you can see, a similar gathering space is being provided on the corner, and additional landscaping along all public streets is planned. As in the previous application that was heard and approved and built, this site will also have a number of curb cuts eliminated. One feature that is an upgrade to the site over the airline site is the divided private landscape drive between the CVS store and the remaining portion of the site. The development of this site will require the demolition of all of the buildings on the site. Currently, these buildings have a value of $3 million for real estate tax purposes. After completion of the CVS development only, the value for real estate tax purposes will increase to a little over $4.5 million, or an increase of about $20,000 in real estate taxes alone. CVS plans to employ at this location eight full-time employees and 20 part-time employees, and expect to have a yearly revenue of $4 to $6 million at this store. This slide shows the four elevations of the building. Again, it is similar to the airline development, but minor changes are incorporated to have it be consistent with the Harris Teeter store recently constructed. This slide is provided by the applicant to better demonstrate the additional landscaping plan for the site. It also illustrates that instead of a painted handicap ramp at the front door of the facility, colored stamped asphalt will be used. This composite picture shows the commercial development to the north. Behind the gas station and the bank shown here is the Harris Teeter store. This slide shows the funeral home to the east of the CVS site, which will also be included in the assemblage and demolished. Again, as the staff report provides, a tenant for the area that is currently shown as vacant has not been determined at this time. The Masonic Temple to the east of the funeral home will remain. This slide shows that to the south of the gas station, but again, as part of this site, is a pool supply center and dentist office. This land and these buildings, this land will be included, and these buildings will also be demolished as part of the overall redevelopment of the site. To the west of the site are a commercial in-lane shopping center, gasoline supply station, and a fast food restaurant. For the reasons presented in this presentation and the staff report that you have before you, staff recommended approval of the use permit with the conditions as contained in the staff report to the Planning Commission at their January 15, 2013, public hearing. At that meeting, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this request by a vote of six to zero. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
This might be for the developer. What kind of timeline are we looking at again?
I'll let the developer answer that, sir.
Good evening. Eric Doring with Kimley Horn and Associates, 501 Independence Parkway. The timeline for construction is intended to be completed before the end of 2013 for the CVS store.
2013, okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on UP 1301, and at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address to speak specifically on item UP 1301. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved seven zero. City Manager's Report, 13-62, adoption of an ordinance to appropriate in the FY 2012-13 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund, the sum of $14,660 allocated by the Office of Behavioral Health Services within the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services for use by the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to strengthen local prevention, planning, and programming for children and youth. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 13-63, adoption of an ordinance to accept a U.S. Department of Agriculture grant in the amount of $30,550 through the Virginia Department of Health, and to appropriate said sum in the FY 2012-13 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services for the Child and Adult Care Food Program, Kids' Meal Program. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have a speaker, Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si. I live in the Woodbine Farm section of Churchland. John Adams, second president of the United States, stated, "Rights come from God, not the state. You have rights prior to all earthly governments, rights that cannot be repealed or restrained by human laws, rights derived from the great legislator of the universe." Lincoln, the 16th president, said, "Study the Constitution. Let it be preached from the pulpit proclaimed in the legislature enforced in courts of justice." Principle of Liberty 26, "The core unit which determines the strength of any society is the family; therefore, the government should foster and protect its integrity." Instead of protecting the family, our local government has become the mama for our city. Mama Portsmouth List of Social Ills, 898 unwed fathers, products of conception, 248 pregnancies, 480 terminations of pregnancies, 10,601 students receiving free or reduced school lunches, 3,556 incidents of disrespect by students in our public school system. Thirty-nine percent of the adults and children are overweight or obese. There are over 3,000 public housing units and over $195 million provided to social services for many immoral and self-indulgent acts. Parks and Recreation asked the Department of Agriculture for a grant for $30,550 for this year for the Child and Adult Care Food Program. Where is this program addressed in the Parks and Recreation Leisure Services master plan presented to City Council on May 22, 2012? Why did the Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services ask for this money? By whose authority? Where are the civic leagues in these areas consulted? Why aren't the parents responsible to provide snacks and meals? The children are getting free and reduced lunches at school. Mama Government has taken away the duties and responsibilities of her citizens, the duty to honor the supremacy of the legislative creator and his laws. There are no prayers in school, and many children don't go to Sunday School. The duty to be honest in all transactions with others. There are those who want to make a profit on the backs of others everywhere in our city. The duty of children to honor and obey their parents and elders. Why should they? The traditional home lacks a leader, a father. The duty of parents and elders to protect, teach, feed, clothe, and provide shelter for children is turned over to social services, public housing authority, and Parks and Recreation. The duty to provide insofar as possible for the needs of the helpless, the sick, the crippled, the injured, the poverty-stricken. Again, Mama Government has taken on that role. The duty to honorably perform contracts and covenants both with God and man. We have a me, me, me society because the Mama Government is providing equal things, not equal rights. The duty to become economically self-sufficient. Why not take what Mama Government hands out? We are entitled, we are victims. We are not fixing our economic problems by asking for handouts from Mama Government. The deadly sin of greed is the problem in our city. We have forgotten God's laws and condone immorality and self-indulgent acts. Money provided by Mama Government supports these acts. A number of our representatives should be withdrawn from our City Council, whose erroneous biases are leading us to this unity. It may indeed injure them in fame or fortune, but it saves our city and our republican form of government. Thanks for listening.
Council members, there are no additional speakers on this item. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. New Business, 13-64, Boards and Commissions, Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mayor, members of council. We have one reappointment, and the following appointments to Boards and Commissions tonight. The appointments are as thus. Americans with Disabilities Commission, Carl Seward. Community Criminal Justice Board, Brandon Godfrey. Historic Preservation Commission is on hold. History Commission, Earl Moore and Catherine Sanders. Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Terry Hatcher. Library Board, Robert Barber. Newport Community Development Authority, Earl Moore. And Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission is Guy Wallace, and Mr. Wallace will be replacing a slot being vacated by Jerry Miller. We certainly appreciate Mr. Miller's volunteerism in the past. Social Services Advisory Commission, Patrice Ward. Southeastern Alcohol Safety Action Program, Ursula Murphy. Stop Organization, the Honorable Marlene Randall. And the reappointment, Downtown Design Committee is Lynn Singer. And we also like to give a mention to the past volunteerism of Richard Dawson, who will be departing the Supplemental Retirement Board.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moody. Madam Clerk?
13-65, items submitted by council members. Adoption of a resolution requesting that the Planning Commission review the issue of whether the zoning code should be amended to permit the confined raising of chickens and communicate its recommendations to the City Council. I do have a registered speaker, Ms. Kathy Shapley.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, and valued members of City Council. My name is Kathy Shapley, and I reside in the Simondsdale section of our city. I spoke with you on December 11 about our vision to change the codes to once again allow Portsmouth residents the freedom to own a small number of backyard hens. Tonight, I have presented each of you with a report containing information we feel would be beneficial in addressing any concerns there may be with our request to own hens, including noise, odor, and along with nutritional and economic benefits to families. But the main topic I would like to discuss with you tonight is the nonexistent threat of disease. Recently, in the Sunday paper, there was a statement made by the Environmental Health Manager for Norfolk's Department of Health, which I would like to address. The quote from the Virginian Pilot reads, "Chickens could attract disease-carrying predators such as raccoons and foxes. They also could harbor diseases such as West Nile virus and eastern equine encephalitis, also known as triple E." First, I will address the raccoons and foxes. These animals are opportunistic and are also attracted to garbage cans, pet food, and bird feeders, which are left outside, more so than a few chickens enclosed in a coop that is predator-proof. Second, I will address the diseases mentioned, such as West Nile virus and eastern equine encephalitis. I have researched the CDC, the Virginia Department of Health, and the Virginian Department of Game and Inland Fisheries websites, and have found the year 2011 to be the most up-to-date statistics available to the public online. This is what I have found. Confirmed human cases of triple E in Virginia are zero. Confirmed human cases of West Nile in Virginia were four with zero in the Hampton Roads area. However, there were 756 confirmed human cases of Lyme disease, which is transmitted by ticks. Well, I have great news for all of us. Chickens love to eat ticks.[1437.72][1437.72](LAUGHTER). So, in closing, I will leave you with this thought. Perhaps a few backyard hens would be a friend to the prevention of disease, and we should not be so quick to cry foul on these birds.[1450.52][1450.52](LAUGHTER). At this time, I would like our group and any supporters to stand as I thank you for your time and dedication to our city, and may God bless America, our troops, and the great city of Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you.[1463.65][1463.65](APPLAUSE).
Members of council, there are no additional speakers on this item. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero.[1497.12][1497.12](APPLAUSE). Adoption of a resolution supporting a healthy Portsmouth initiative to improve the health and quality of life of the city's residents. Electronic roll call, and I have a registered speaker, Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si. I live in the Woodbine Farm section of Churchland. Principles of Liberty 19, "Only limited and carefully defined power should be delegated to government, all others being retained in the people." This resolution is overreaching its authority into people's lives and increasing the bureaucracy of our local government. The real issue here is not about weight loss, it's about control, absolute control in every way possible. Here's what Mayor Wright said in the Virginian Pilot, October 28, 2012, and I quote, "The most significant problems facing the city of Portsmouth are the economic challenges that we've had to overcome since 2007. Our national economic recovery has been slow, and with the constant reduction in state funding, has put a strain on our ability to balance our budgets. Our city is only 33 square miles and nearly 50% of its tax-exempt land owned by federal or state governments. Providing core and ancillary services required by our citizens is also becoming very challenging. The one initiative that should be our highest priority is creating new revenue sources. Our greatest opportunity is through economic development. Our downtown waterfront, the Frederick and Victory Boulevard corridors, the old Woodrow Wilson High School and Craddock High School sites are areas that could have a major impact for the next 50 years. In order to address the above challenges, we need a leader who understands the power of unity and communication. We must come together and identify the priorities of our city. We also must communicate these priorities to our citizens with the understanding that they are connected to the overall plan. Being the leader doesn't mean you're the smartest. A good leader surrounds himself with the best talent and then allows freedom of expression amongst the team. The most important thing a leader should never do is go around telling everybody he's the leader. A good leader leads by example and creates the atmosphere that every member is important. The Portsmouth family is made up of great middle-class neighborhoods, wonderful schools, active churches, and most of all, beautiful and compassionate people. As mayor of this great city and president, CEO of rights engineering, I commit to you that we will work as a team, respect each other, and move Portsmouth forward." End of quote. The mayor states that the one initiative that should be our highest priority is creating new revenue sources. That was a lie. What happened to the duty to honorably perform contracts and covenants both with God and man? Portsmouth needs a leader who understands the power of unity and communication. That was a lie. The article in the News Channel confirms that lie. Who will be next to have their personal life exposed? Is this a method to scare people to prevent them from running for council? Are you trying to scare me so I won't run for council next year? Allowing for freedom of expression? That's a lie. The mayor took the video cameras off the non-agenda speakers but kept the cameras rolling for the agenda speakers. A leader shouldn't go around telling everybody he's the leader. That's true. Leadership is by equality.
Ms. Si, out of respect of this chamber, I'm going to ask you to...
Leads by example and creates the atmosphere that every member is important. That's a lie.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Members of council, are there any additional speakers? We have no additional speakers. Do any of you have anything? Thank you.
Second. Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically.
Thank you.
This item is adopted seven zero. Are there any additional items to be submitted by council members?
Let me first recognize the presence of Pastor Joe B. Fleming from the Great Third Baptist Church here in the City of Portsmouth. Pastor, it's always an honor and a pleasure to have you in our presence, sir, and there's a couple of seats up front, if you don't mind. And welcome. Let me also reiterate what we mentioned in the work session earlier about last week was Local Governments' Day in Richmond, and myself and the city manager, Mr. Rowe, had a great opportunity to spend the day up in Richmond with all of our delegation and going through that entire sausage-making process. And as you all know, this is a short session, and we left about a week ago, and thanks and things have changed dramatically since then. We were just giving an update. But it is great to see our delegation working in unisys on some of the things that we feel are paramount to our city. So, Mr. Rowe, would you like to add anything to that, sir? We also had a meeting with our Virginia First Cities, as well as the VML Conference, and quite a few items that were taken up by all of the cities and pretty good perspectives as well. So it was a great day in all and all. Manager Rowe?
It was a good day, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for going. If I may say, the mayor testified on a very important bill, and hit a home run.
Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. On a sadder note, I'd like to point out that our sheriff's department lost one of their deputies that had served a number of years. He was lost in the line of duty. Motorcycle accident was the cause, and that's Billy Grimsley. That occurred on, his passing occurred on February 3. We just want to let the family know that he'll certainly be missed, and we certainly appreciate the service, dedication he gave to our city.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 13-66, Report on Pending Items, Ms. Bernadette Hall.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Bernadette Hall of City and Buzzman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on January 22, 2013. There were seven non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on January 22, 2013. None of the speakers required action by staff, but I do have an update on an item talked about earlier. Parking concerns on River Point Drive. The Traffic Engineering Department has reached an agreement with the board at River Point. No-through trucks signs will not be installed. The board preferred to deal with trucks on a case-by-case basis. Because there appears to be a need for additional on-street parking, parking will not be completely eliminated on River Point Drive inbound. However, it will be restricted to smaller areas as greater clearance will be provided at the intersections by relocating the existing signs. This change will be monitored to determine if additional changes are warranted. Parking will not be allowed in the first block of River Point Drive off of River Point Parkway. The Portsmouth Police Department has served as a conduit between Traffic Engineering and the board at River Point. The part-time officers at River Point will be assisting in the monitoring and enforcement of the current agreement. And I have one other thing.
Let me ask you, before you go to that next item. The citizen that came and spoke up on this item initially is... Where are we at with him? I think he initially was not satisfied with what we came up with, Mr. Wright. And is this a more of a compromise? And thank you, Bernadette. You've got one other item, right? Okay. Mr. Wright?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Yes, we talked with the board, and they had more overall concerns than just this one gentleman. So this is more of a compromise.
Okay. And more comprehensive of the whole River Point area as well?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Ms. Hope?
I'd like to invite you to attend the 2013 Portsmouth Neighborhood Academy. The Portsmouth Neighborhood Academy is a unique opportunity to learn how to access city services and partner with local government to improve neighborhood quality and service delivery. The classes are free and open to the public. Sessions will be held Thursday, April 11, and Thursday, April 18, in the council chamber from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. To register, you may call me at 393-5143.
Okay. Thank you.
13-67, Non-Agenda Speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Betty Ashberry.